Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Hall for January 12th at 7:01 PM. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next item on our agenda is roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Alder Allen, not present yet. Alder Heradefrada.
Yes.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
And Alder Wheeler.
Here.
My apologies.
We have a quorum?
You have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to item four, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the draft minutes from October 27th, 2021?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion made by Alder Herbst, excuse me, and seconded by Alder Gerhart. Discussion. Yes.
At the time, the minutes indicate that the next Committee of the Hall is January 26th. Do we need to change the minutes? You know, we changed the date for the Committee of the Hall, or is that fine the way it is?
Go ahead, Misty.
I guess I would say since at that time, that was what we intended to be the next Committee of the Hall, so I'd leave it that way because it matches the agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Very observant.
All right, so we'll leave as is. All right. Very good. Place the motion to vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item, public appearances for non-agenda items. Do we have anybody registered?
Yes.
All right. Nobody registered. Moving on, item six, agenda items. First on the agenda is the ARPA, TID, Close Your Spending Plan. And Misty Dodge, you will speak to this item?
Yes, please.
All right. You have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, everybody, for allowing me to come talk to you today. This is really the kickoff of how we're going to create that ARPA and TID six closure spending plan. So I know the slides are going to be a question, so those will be posted to the city's website tomorrow morning, both for your reference as well as the reference of the public. So we'll get those up tomorrow. Tonight, we aren't going to talk about specific priorities within the spending plan. Tonight, we're just going to talk about kind of the background, you know, where the money is coming from, that type of a thing. So it's not about the specific plan, it's more that context. So tonight's discussion, we're going to start with the purpose of a spending plan, you know, why we're going through this exercise. What is ARPA and FRF, the allowable uses, restrictions, and best practices of that funding? Where is TID six? Why is it closing? And then what are the financial impacts of that? What the next steps would be in creating a spending plan? And then we'll open up the discussion for all of you to have a kind of your initial reaction about what you think are the most important priorities that should be included in the spending plan. So if you have questions as we go, feel free to ask as we go. I will also stop or pause after each one of the sections before we move on to the next if there's more questions then. I think that might help the discussion. I did want to include a slide of acronyms. So as classic government, we do a lot of abbreviations. So you'll see these acronyms throughout the presentation and throughout the spending plan. I just wanted to kind of put them in one spot for you. This is far from all of them that we use, but are at least the ones appropriate for this conversation. So the purpose of the spending plan, you know, why are we going through this exercise? Really, it's a demonstration of thoughtful financial planning, that you're being very strategic in how you want to spend this money, and it demonstrates that to the taxpayers as well as Moody's and the businesses and the rest of the people, that you spent some time really thinking about how best to utilize this pretty large one-time funding that we're receiving. I do want to make it clear, though, that a spending plan is not a budget. So this spending plan, think of it as that 30,000-foot view. You are going to set what the priorities are, to really limit the scope on what research needs to be done. There's a lot of different funding options, different projects or programs you could fund with this money, and there's a lot of different rules depending on which of those priorities you choose. So the goal of this really is to say no to certain things, and we won't waste the resources trying to explore those options, and instead just identify the specific buckets or groups of priorities that you have, and then you will direct staff to research those more, you know, work on implementation of those. Likely, a lot of those projects or programs would have to come back to the council or through the CIP or the budget process. So once this spending plan is passed, it is a plan, and again, it's that 30,000-foot view. We're not going to get into the specifics about particular pieces of the project. So ARPA, so I'll call it ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. Sorry. This is historic. You know, this is the first time in the history of our country that every single municipality has gotten aid from the federal government. So as I have been frustrated in the past, is how there wasn't clarity at the beginning and how the rules have changed, I've had to keep in mind that, need to have patience because this is not something that's been done before, and I hope council will give me some of that same patience, too. I'm sure you'll have questions tonight that I won't be able to answer, and part of it is because it is so much information and just figuring out what all the answers are, if they're even available. So when we talk about ARPA, I wanted to point out, too, that ARPA is much bigger than the money that we're talking about. So this is a great infographic from Baker Tilly that talks about all the different programs that were available through ARPA. It included things like the enhanced unemployment benefits, the direct stimulus payments, refundable child tax credits, increase in SNAP benefits, assistance to restaurants and bars, the paycheck protection program, shuttered venue program, K-12 education, higher education, FEMA funding, housing funding, emergency rental assistance, and then the city's piece was just part, one part of that overall program. So there's $350 billion of non-competitive funding that was, again, provided to every single municipality in the country. So this piece here is where this, Fitchburg's going to get their money, and it's one piece of an overall pie. So looking at the funds that the city is going to get, so technically, it's the fiscal recovery funds, or the FRF piece of the ARPA overall program. There's two different types of governmental units. There's the entitlement units, which are generally 50,000 or more in population, and then there's the non-entitlement units, which is obviously where we fall, and that allocation was based on population. So our population was 30,792, which equated to about $3.2 million in FRF funding for us. We're going to get that money in two payments, so we got half of it already back in 2021, and I expect to get the other half in about May of 2022. I'd also want to point out that while I say ARPA, I'm actually talking about that FRF money. So just from a terminology thing, I'm going to use ARPA still even though I am only talking about one piece of the money. And then I also included some other communities on this slide, just so you can see for comparative purposes. So Dane County also got an FRF allocation of the 106 million. They also got some of that emergency rental assistance money, that separate bucket in there, and then I listed Madison, some parade, Middleton, just kind of for reference points.
I have a question.
Yeah, of course.
If Dane County is receiving money as well, I'm assuming some of that, obviously, it's going to overlap into all municipalities within Dane County, so we could benefit in that respect as well.
Absolutely. So there's a lot of county programs that have been issued already, I'm sure you've heard about them through the news, that have very much so benefited our residents as well, just funded through the county program.
Right. Very good.
So the FRF or the ARPA final rule did come out last week, so included on here is the link to the final rule if you wanted to read it. There's also an overall, or an overview of the final rule that Treasury put together. It's a much more condensed and kind of user-friendly document. If you're interested in learning more about the program, I would encourage you to read that. I suspect we'll actually include it as an appendix to this, the spending plan, because it does do such a nice job of summarizing the options and the requirements and some more of this background stuff. So the final rule goes into effect April 1st of 2022, which works out fine for us. You know, we're going through the spending plan now, we're expecting to adopt it the second meeting in March, so having the effective date of April 1st is not a problem for us. But Treasury has indicated that anybody that relied on the interim final rules and made decisions and made purchases, that they will not enforce actions against them based on that interim final rule. So that's just a helpful piece. I'll also say that because the final rule did somewhat significantly change the rules there, I think the delay that we had, the kind of wait-and-see approach, is going to work out in our favor. Some of the, one of the biggest changes in the final rule is about lost revenue, which I'll get into later, but it did provide, the final rule provided a lot of additional flexibility for us that wasn't available under the interim rule. So the goals of this funding, and this is just taken from the Treasury's website, usually I don't like to read off slides, but this is very concise, so I'd like to for this one. So the SLFRF program provides governments across the country with the resources needed to fight the pandemic and support families and businesses struggling with its public health and economic impacts, maintain vital public services even amid declines in revenue resulting from the crisis, and build a strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. So that was what the federal government outlined or laid out as the goals of this program. Now, within those big overarching goals, they have a list of specific eligible uses. So this is another snip from the Treasury website, and you can see there's four main buckets here. So it's one to replace lost public sector revenue, we can respond to the far-reaching public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And I'll note that that does include stormwater projects as well, which I know is a big conversation during the 2022 budget process. The thing that I like, though, about this document is Treasury also recognized, though, that each community has unique needs and unique goals for what they think would be best for their community. So there is a lot of flexibility built into this, especially in the final rule, so you have a lot of flexibility to decide how you think this money will best meet the goals of our community. I included this infographic, too. It's just another way to look at it. This is from the Department of Revenue, lists all the different kind of categories that we can spend the money on, but I'll note that this was based on the interim rule instead. So lost revenue. So lost revenue is that first eligible use listed by the Treasury, and this is by far the most flexible way to use the funding. So if we have lost revenue, we can use that money then for the provision of government services up to the amount of lost revenue. So basically, what that means is anything that we are already doing or services we provide as a government, we can support that with this funding up to the amount of the lost revenue amount. Under the interim final rule, and I guess really under the final one, too, there is a calculation included on how to calculate that lost revenue, so relatively complicated and nuanced calculation, but one of the best things, in my opinion, that they included in that final rule was a standard allowance of $10 million. So every municipality can assume that up to $10 million of their allocation was lost revenue. So since Fitchburg is getting 3.2 million, we can assume that that whole amount can be spent on lost revenue purposes, so we can assume that whole amount can be spent for the provision of government services. So that's on the eligible use, like how we would use it as a program, but we still have to follow all of the other grant requirements. So reporting and procurement and all of that, which we'll talk about later, still applies, but at least we have pretty strong flexibility on how we want to support our budget and our community with this funding. Keeping on the lost revenue track, so Treasury with the final rule put out this blurb as well, which I thought was really helpful. It further defined what that means as far as the provision of government services, and you can see here in bold, whoop, if I go back, government services generally include any service traditionally provided by government, and you can see it listed a couple of items. These are, it's a non-exclusive list, though, so it includes things like road building and maintenance, other infrastructure, general government administration, staff and administrative facilities, a provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. So it's really all the things that you think of what a government typically provides. We can use this funding to support that. So I'm not planning to go through each one of the individual eligible sources, and that was, is what the benefit of the spending plan is, is we can narrow the scope on all of the details that need to be worked out. But because we spent so much time in the 2022 budget talking about stormwater projects, I thought it would be at least worth mentioning it quickly here. So stormwater projects, we had talked a lot about that quantity versus quality conversation, which at this point now does not exist for a couple of reasons. Going back to the interim rule and the frequently asked questions, in frequently asked question 6.1 and in the interim rule, they talk about how the projects need to be connected to the EPA Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And then if you go to the EPA, this is the list of projects that they say are eligible under that revolving loan fund, and it says specifically stormwater projects, oh, sorry, stormwater projects must have a water quality benefit. So that's where we left off with the interim rule. Then with the final rule, they added some additional stormwater projects that would be eligible for this funding. So a lot of the projects that we were talking about that may not have qualified before under the interim rule will now qualify under this category under the final rule because these additional projects were added. That being said, going back to the lost revenue calculation, because stormwater is something that we provide as a government, and we have less than $10 million in our money, we can take that $10 million standard allocation and use it on stormwater projects however we want to. So there's kind of two ways that we could get stormwater projects done now under the final rule. There are some ineligible uses, though. So even if we take that $10 million standard allowance, there are some things that we still cannot do because it's just not allowed under the program. This first one is actually a bit of contention during the interim rule, so it was originally stated that this funding could not be used as match funding for other federal grants. In the final rule, they clarified that if you use the lost revenue provision, you actually can use it as a match for other grants, which is really huge for us. I mean, that means that we can really leverage this money for projects to get even more non-city funding to help get those accomplished. There is some nuance, there's a couple of programs that we still can't use even under the revenue loss, but those aren't programs that we generally apply for, so I wouldn't worry about those. But this would include things like the infrastructure bill that was passed recently, the other ARPA programs that they have available, there's transportation grants like the TAP program we're looking at, OEI grants, which I know staff is looking at, stormwater grants, broadband grants, there's a lot of different ways that we could leverage this money to get other grants as well. Other things we can't use this money for is to pay off existing debt, so we can use the money to not borrow for a project with new debt, but we can't use this money to pay existing debt. We can't use it to make an extraordinary contribution to a pension fund. This doesn't apply to Fitchburg. This is other states that may have a pension that's having problems, which they were specifically told are not allowed to do that for. We can, however, use this money for like regular WRS contributions if we did do an employee use of sorts out of this money, so that doesn't, isn't a problem. Can't use it for legal settlements or judgments. You can't just deposit the money in a rainy day fund or federal reserve or financial reserves. You do actually have to spend the money. And then you can't use it for anything that conflicts with the purpose of ARPA, it's like anything that would undermine COVID-19 mitigation practices, anything that would conflict with the uniform guidance, conflicts of interest requirements, or any other federal, state, and local laws and regulations. So lots of common sense stuff to an extent on things that we can't do with the money, but even taking these things off the table, I think there's a lot of different ways still that Fitchburg could use it. Mentioned a couple of times about the uniform guidance requirements, so these still apply. This really just the first one, this allowable activities, that's the one, if we use the lost revenue allocation, that basically is met without any extra hurdles, but the rest of them we still have to do. So if we have beneficiaries, subrecipients, or contractors, we have to make sure that they have a valid registration. If we purchase equipment with the money or land, there's additional rules we have to follow. A period of performance is set, so we have to incur the money by the end of 2024, which basically means contracts have to be signed, but we can actually expend the money or pay the cash by the end of 2026. We do have reporting requirements, so I have to file a report every April 30th, starting in 2022, and then every year after, and then we're also going to be required to go through a single audit. Might be the first single audit that Fitchburg has ever done, so there's going to be some learning curve there, but we've met the requirement, so it's just a way for them to document that we met the requirements. Subrecipient monitoring still has to happen, and then procurement rules, so that's about when bids are required, making sure the vendor is eligible, that we have the policies in place to approve the purchases and make the purchases, that stuff. So that was kind of what the rules are on the money. I'd like to spend a little time talking about what I would call the best practices for how to spend the money. So I think really focusing on kind of that strategic use of the money, you know, figure out what is the main goals of our community and how this money can best meet those goals. We're going to want to be cautious about projects that create ongoing obligations or ongoing costs after this money runs out or is no longer eligible to be used. We should be cautious about duplication with those other state and county programs. For example, I know Governor Evers released a program just last week about delinquent water bills and a way to help provide some relief there, so we might want to be cautious about duplicating that, since we know that there's another program that is already taking care of that need. Also, good to match our projects with those other funding sources, so especially now that we can use this money as that federal or non-federal match, look at what the projects are that we may want to get done, particularly, I'm thinking about infrastructure, capital, public works projects. Look at what all of those great projects are, try to find another funding source that can match that first, and then use this money to kind of meet our match requirement, would be a good way to do that, especially as we're looking at that infrastructure bill that's out now. If broadband is a priority, we're going to want to make sure we coordinate efforts with other agencies. I know the PSE has a specific person just on broadband coordination, I just want to make sure we work with them. I also wouldn't be surprised if there's a regional kind of effort that is done to make it a more efficient project, so make sure that we just are in communication with other people.
Regarding broadband, let's just say if we use funds from ARPA for broadband here in Fitchburg or rural Fitchburg, where does the funding for the governor, that the governor has put forth and some of the federal earlier dollars, are those all intertwined or are they separate? Do you know how that all comes into play?
Yep, so it is separate to an extent because it's kind of separate buckets of money, either through their portion of ARPA or a separate bucket within ARPA, or the Infrastructure Act, I know, talked a lot about broadband. If we do try to utilize some of that more global regional funding, there will likely still be a non-federal or non-grant match that's required, and that's where this funding could be leveraged to get some access to some of that other bigger funding.
Okay. All right.
As we go through the spending plan, we're going to want to make sure that we're connecting our projects with those expenditure categories, because that's how I have to report it, although if we use that lost revenue category, that makes that much easier. And then I'd request that you consider the administrative burden and just staff capacity, you know, make sure that the staff is available to make sure these programs are successful, that they meet the reporting and the compliance requirements to do it well. Now that we've talked about kind of all the different things, I wanted to include this slide. I thought this was a great slide from a Treasury webinar I was on today that just talked about some of the main things that changed from the interim rule to the final rule, so that if you were trying to follow along before the final rule came out, you have a nice little picture about those bigger changes that were made. And then if you do want to do some of your own research, this is the list of references that I use the most. The one with the blue star is through the U.S. Treasury, the non-entitlement unit specific information, which would be what we qualify as. So that would be one of the best resources for the actual like rules, and then the other links would be ones that kind of analyze those rules and help digest them. So that's all I had on ARPA. Thought I'd take a moment here to answer any questions if they're already before I go to the TID closure piece.
Yes, Alder Maldonado, you have the floor.
Sure. So I'm about halfway through the document, and I'm noticing that for some of the uses of the funds that were specified, they involve something like staffing, but I also hear in, you know, your best practices, you know, the importance of, I guess, not creating a cost that will, that we'll have to, you know, bear in the long run. How have other municipalities sort of justified that?
So I think it depends on how they're using the staffing. So I'll say there's a fair amount of especially larger communities that are hiring LTE staff in order to do, say, the vaccination clinics and the testing facilities, those public health services, I think that's where a lot of people are spending their money if they're doing it on staffing, is on those public health services that we don't provide, so that's not as much of an issue. But you're right, there is a balance there. So we are allowed to spend the money on things that will create future obligations for us, and we just need to make sure we're very cautious when we take, if we take that approach, understand what that balance is.
Thank you. Additional questions? Alder Heradefrada? Yes, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Thank you. Misty, you know, I also am reading the 437 pages, so I am maybe half of that, and also, you talk only about the lost revenue, but there are other buckets that we can use the money to. This is one of the eligible uses. So that one is one that there are more in the big, you know, if you read the final rule, and you will see that there are more stuff there. The other thing is, can you pay the single audit with ARPA funds?
So there's an allowability, and I think I talked about it towards the end, I probably should have had it in this section. There is a 10% de minimis administrative cost allocation, so if we're getting $3.2 million, 320,000 of it could be allocated towards administrative costs, which would cover things like that single audit, you know, mine and other staff's time, making sure we're in compliance with the rules, whatever other administrative work is required to implement these projects.
And also, can I, it's a follow-up, in the document mentioned about the qualified census tract areas, that, reading the document, it put a lot of emphasis in investing in those areas, and in future, we have two areas where they are qualified census tract, so what is your, you know, how we are going to, how we are going to work around this? Do you have any idea, plan? Can you share that information with the others so they know where those qualified census tract information are? Practically, it's the healthy neighborhood areas, but part of that.
Correct. So in that bullet point number two, it talks about responding to the far-reaching public health and negative economic impacts. That's where that qualified census tract stuff comes in. So we do have two- So we do have two qualified census tracts. I'm happy to send out the link to everybody if you want to see. I think Mike Zimmerman has a map that I can share to show you where those are. Yep, that is definitely an option too, if you wanted to go under that second bullet.
Okay. But we can, we can, when we are planning about our, you know, ideas on how to use, I think, you know, there beside the lost revenue, there are all the eligible uses too, that we can also invest to these funds.
I guess just keep in mind too, the lost revenue, just because we take it, doesn't mean we can't use it still for a qualified census tract project. So they're they're not mutually exclusive. The benefit of, even if you do the same project that's eligible under two categories, we still want to take it under the lost revenue category, simply because that gives us the most streamlined reporting requirements.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Yes, Joe, go ahead.
So my second question is, you talked in the beginning in your presentation about sort of other municipalities and thinking about, you know, possible duplication of services. Do you get a sense from talking? One thing I think about in particular is Madison Dane County Public Health. Is there a sort of quick rundown of, of, you know, how how much funding that specific, you know, entity has been allocated and what they're using the funds for? Because I think that that's, it presents a large opportunity for us, but I also want to be aware of kind of what they're doing so that we're not duplicating services if, you know, if we choose to go in that direction for any of these funds.
So Dane County Public Health wouldn't have gotten a direct allocation of this FRF money. They would have gotten probably other allocations through a variety of different buckets. And then I suspect that they were funded through Dane County and the City of Madison, who finances that service. So they are larger and would have to file interim reports. Their first one is due at the end of January. However, I don't know if I have access to that report. I can do a little digging to find out.
Please.
Other questions? Yes, Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thank you. Misty, I think your point about, you know, using this money strategically as possible and not not using the money in a way that we could use it through other federal funds or, you know, we have to be really strategic about this money. And I know we've had a lot of discussions about stormwater projects, and I do anticipate that we'll probably spend some of those ARPA money on stormwater projects. But I guess I'm, what I'd like to ask you is kind of a general question about stormwater utility fees. Because those utility fees are not property taxes, they they're different. And my understanding is that more entities in Fitchburg contribute to stormwater utility fees than just the taxpayers, property taxpayers. So my guess would, my intuition would be that we wouldn't want to use all of the ARPA funds on stormwater projects, because we still want to utilize stormwater utility fees, even if we might want to use some of it to kind of offset what the stormwater utility has to pay for. So that's a very rambling thought, but I was wondering if you could just tell us a little bit about stormwater utility fees, how they're funded, the benefits of using them, and if there's any sort of financial strategy associated with that.
Absolutely. So stormwater utility is a separate utility, similar to the water utility or the sewer utility. So the rate payers versus the taxpayers, there are a lot of the same people, it's just how it's done is differently. So for example, a rural house for a stormwater fee will pay much less than an urban house, where if it's the same value of a home, they'll pay the same property taxes. So I think of the utility rate payers as kind of a change in how that funding is allocated. The other benefit of the stormwater utility, though, is it's not regulated. So there's no levy limits or any comparison to it. It's not regulated by the PSE. So as long as we are spending money on true stormwater utility costs, the council would have the ability to increase rates to be whatever they needed to be to meet, to match the service level that you want to provide. So there is a lot of flexibility there that's not available, say, in the property tax-funded functions.
May I ask one more follow up?
I was just going to ask Misty a real quick clarifying question, Alder Gerhart. If if the money was allocated for stormwater projects, would that potentially mitigate or minimize future increases in in stormwater utility rates?
Exactly. So if the money for, we all know there's a lot of big stormwater projects happening now, right? So if we can use a different funding source for that, then it will hopefully mitigate the need for a much larger increase in those stormwater rates in the future. It's not going to decrease rates by any means, but it will hopefully avoid a large increase in the future to cover those same costs. So yes.
Alder Gerhart, did you want to do one of the follow up?
Yeah. And thank you. This might not be something you can answer, but do you have a sense of? And I know you hesitate to share your opinion because these are policy decisions and that. But do you have a sense of like how you would, you think would be a responsible way to use ARPA funding? Like, would you think that we should spend 20% on stormwater projects and the rest on lost revenue? Do you have a feel for, any sort of feel for how you would think would be the best way to spend it, in your opinion?
That's a loaded question, and you're right, I don't like to.
It's okay if you don't want to answer. I just I just didn't know if you had any general thoughts, even if they're very general.
Yeah. We'll talk about the TID closure money next, and that money really should not be spent on stormwater stuff. So I'd say if a stormwater project is a priority that really should be funded from ARPA and not from TID, I do have opinions about which bucket things should come from. I think being strategic and making sure we aren't setting ourselves up for future financial burdens could be an important thing to keep in mind. But also, this is really historic funding. You know, this is a great way for us to set up our community and our government in a way that will set us up for the future, you know, make us a really well-run organization. You know, we we struggle with funding some of those things sometimes with levy limits and other issues that come up. So if we can use this money to give us a head start on certain things, I think that could be helpful.
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Explain a little more, you know, I'm not getting the handle on the lost revenue. You know, we we did not have a decrease in equalized valuation, and so we, you know, we did not lose money that way. I understand we probably lost money on room taxes and hotel taxes, but is that essentially where it is? I don't, I don't see us, you know, decreased revenue, and we, our spending went up.
Yeah, this is going to fall in the category of don't look a gift horse in the mouth. So while I agree that we didn't have lost revenue, you know, in Wisconsin, we're very property tax focused, which is a very stable revenue source. We don't have sales tax or income tax that funds our budget, so we were much more stable. Exactly right, room tax was a big one, interest revenue, and then program fees were the other big ones that we had, nowhere near the $10 million. We did go through the calculation back when it was the interim rule. There's a lot of nuances that still need to be figured out, but it was, we were kind of on the border, right? We wasn't sure if we were going to have any or not. That being said, if they're going to allow us a $10 million standard allocation, which gives us a lot more flexibility, I'd almost hate to not take advantage of that and use that flexibility if we could.
Three and a quarter million.
Agreed. It doesn't change how much money we get, right? It just allows us to do that. And in that 437 pages that Julia is reading as well, it goes through a really interesting analysis of how they came up with that $10 million, you know, what data sets they used, why they picked this number versus that number, and some assumptions. And it's on a very macro level, which is how they were able to justify it to the legislature. But it definitely helps us as well as all the other municipalities that are really getting these smaller allocations, and want to be able to use it in the way that works for their community the best.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Alder.
So follow up your concept, Misty. When we talk about lost revenue, we also need to talk about in a more macro level at the cities, you know, even though our municipality, we have, you know, we didn't lost too much revenue, but also how our community, you know, the impact of the COVID in our community, especially in our qualified census tract affected, you know? So that one, I think that I am, when I am looking at lost revenue, I also like to incorporate that, you know, the whole, it's not only, not only our city whole, our, you know, it's our, the whole community, what it was effect, you know, in general, you know? So especially we can see in our small business owners and some specific, you know, industry, we have, you know, like hospitality, you know, access to, you know, to basic, you know, health services, you know, maybe, you know, lack of access to some of the kids to broadband or connectivity, to do remote learning, you know what I mean? Like, this is how I see the, in the, in the context of the whole community.
Absolutely. I mean, you're right, there was a lot of impacts that this pandemic has caused across a lot of different sectors and perspectives. And I've been really glad to see all the other programs that have been released already that have helped support some of those initiatives as well.
Additional questions? I don't see any hands on Zoom or in chambers. Misty, would you like to move on to the next then?
Yes, I went too far. All right, TID six. So TID six is also going to be closed in the near future. So wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, what TID six is, where it is, what that means, give a little bit of the distinction between these two pots of money that we're planning to get. So TID six, I call it the target TID, just because it's the one that's most relatable. So it's over in the Orchard Point area, Verona McKee. This map here shows you where the boundaries are for that TID. Looking at the 2020 annual report, again, this is 2020. We haven't done the 2021 annual report yet that will be released after audit is done. So these numbers are outdated, but is at least a good ballpark for us. So the base value, which is the same, is about $87 million. And then as of 1/120, the incremental value, which means all the new buildings that were built in TID six, since the TID was created, worked out to be $138 million. So a very successful TID for us. And you look at all the things that that TID has done. So it's did the Spoken Sprocket Road extensions, the McKee Road extension or expansion, the Badger Trail crossing, the Nesbit Road roundabout, Fitcherona Road, and then also some development incentives. So it was a successful TID, but also got a lot of, lot of things done. So again, this is from the 2020, 2020 annual report. So the 2021 incremental revenue, which would be the money for the 2022 budget, was $2.7 million. That was money coming into the TID. We do have some outstanding costs. We have some external debt that we issued for that Spoken Sprocket extension. That is callable in 2023, but we have enough cash at this point to pay that off. We also have one development incentive outstanding, and then there's some administrative costs that we still have to pay, final audit, as well as those lawsuits that I know we've talked about recently. So when we close a TID, there's three financial impacts that could come into play. The first one is an optional one. I know we want to do it, though, right, Julia? So this is the Affordable Housing Extension. We did do this back when TID seven closed, but it was a much smaller dollar amount that went into our Affordable Housing Fund. So if we take this Affordable Housing Extension, it would be a really significant influx of cash into that Affordable Housing program, under the tune of that $2.7 million. So I listed the state statute that authorizes that. And then if we do that, that 2.67 million, 75% of it has to benefit Affordable Housing, and the remaining funding can be spent to improve housing stock. So there are some requirements on, I guess, the broad goals of the funding, but how we meet those goals is very vague in the statutes. So here at Fitchburg, we have, you know, started that pilot program with the rent-to-own concept, and there's some other things that the Housing Committee is working on. So this money will make a really big impact into those initiatives, but it does have to get approved by council. So you'll see that resolution get referred out at the next meeting, and then we'll act on it. The next financial impact of closing a TID is the levy limit adjustment. So I haven't recalculated this recently, but we're expecting to get about $400,000 of a levy limit adjustment. This is what you would use for those ongoing costs. So it's a great way to support your staffing or your ongoing services that you provide within your budget. But I'll remind you that we did spend that already as we were going through the 2022 budget. So that has already been allocated. And then what we need to talk to you as part of the spending plan is that one-time surplus payment. So when the TID closes, because it has been successful, they'll have a fair amount of cash remaining at the end of its life, even after we pay off all of our final costs. And then whatever amount that is needs to get allocated to all of the overlying jurisdictions that paid into the TID. So we would get our share, you know, about a third, and that works out to about $2 million. And I will note that that is different than the estimate that I shared last time. Now that the tax rule is complete, we're able to recalculate what we thought that would be, and it did drop. But $2 million is still a really nice closure payment. Timing of that, so we do have that one outstanding developer incentive, and our agreement on that said that we are not allowed to close the TID unless that's paid off. So you probably noticed we referred out a resolution last night to prepay that obligation, so that would need to be finalized before we could start the actual closure process. The next step would be the Affordable Housing Extension. So my intention is to refer that out at the next meeting, take that to a joint meeting of CEDA and Housing on the 27th, and then come back to Finance and Council on February 8th. And then assuming that is approved, we have a year, up to a year, that we could do the closure. We're going to want to do it right away. So we'll refer the actual closure resolution, the second meeting in February, and take it to Finance and Council that first meeting in March. We need that to be done by April 15th in order to get the levy limit adjustment for the 2023 budget, which is important because we have already spent that with the 2022 budget. So assuming this all goes kind of as planned, we will have the final audit in August of 2022. We'll get that closeout payment in the fall of 2022, and then the levy limit adjustment for the 2023 budget.
Can I ask a question before?
Yes, go ahead, Alder Roda Frata. Go ahead.
Thank you. Misty, before I forget, for the one-time surplus payment, the $2 million, we haven't done any, that one, we didn't do anything during the budget time, isn't it? I don't remember.
Correct. So that's what this is spending plan is for, is for the ARPA funding as well as this TID closure with a fall payment.
Okay.
I'll just say, we don't have, we haven't officially committed, but that's where a lot of the things, people said, oh, let's wait and do this with TIDS. We, there's maybe some soft commits that people have wanted to do, but with nothing that's in stone, I guess. You know, things like tennis courts and the neighborhood plan and things like that. People these talked about, yeah, that's what they plan to use. That doesn't mean that that's going to be the case, but there are some soft commits to some of that.
That's definitely true, and I actually have a slide later on that delineates each one of those. So then looking at best practices for this sort of funding, so again, focus on strategic use. You know, this is not once in a generation, because we're going to close another TID actually really soon, which is a fantastic spot to be in. But it still needs to be done strategically. You know, we need to make sure we're being financially responsible with all of the money that comes in. Similar as before, you know, be cautious of projects or programs that create those ongoing obligations. This is one where though we do want to focus on property tax-funded projects, because it was property taxes that created this surplus, so you'd want it to go and benefit kind of the same group or the same allocation of your payers. And then we do need to earmark some of those closure costs for the legal costs and some other TID six administrative costs that we expect to have. So some of that will need to be set aside for that purpose. So I can pause again. That's all I have about the TID six closure before I go into the. the spending plan.
Alder Herbst, do you have a question?
Yeah, again, again, my ignorance on this, so, how many, how many years, uh, is this TID now, from when we opened it till now?
So we opened it in 2006.
Okay.
And then amended it in 13.
Okay, so a follow-up on that, tell me if I'm, if I'm characterizing this as wrong, but during that time, you know, the, um, businesses that went in there, the taxes they paid, repaid the loan that the taxpayers took out to, to put in the infrastructure for this, okay? But during that entire time, the city provided services, Plowing Street, police, fire, that the existing taxpayers paid the bill for that, and never going to be able to recover that, is, is what I see here. They're, they're never going to get that, we were paying for the services up there and getting nothing during that 13-year period or whatever. So I, I find it a little strange, oh, we got an excess, I think we should figure out what it cost us to provide the services for those businesses during the TIF and be refunded to the taxpayers.
So I would say, to an extent, it is being refunded to a taxpayer, if we use this on projects that would otherwise be spent with levy. So this is another one where-
All right, I'll buy that.
If we spend it on something that we were going to spend with property taxes before, it'll make it so we don't have to go up as high.
Fair enough.
But I, I love your point, though, about how when the TID is in place, the TID properties pay the same amount of taxes, the same tax rate, but it does get diverted into the TID. But we are still providing all those services, and so that is subsidized by the rest of the taxpayers. Um, so that's kind of the, the downside of TID, but then you have that but-for test. So once the TID closes, those costs are now allocated across more people, I mean, in theory, are paying higher taxes, or lower taxes than they would have had the TID not ever happened.
Thank you.
Uh, additional questions? Alder Roda-Frada, your hand is raised, go ahead.
Um, Misty, uh, closing this district is going to open, um, the capacity for, uh, for open another district, how, for how much, do you know that percentage?
I have it in a spreadsheet, uh, so it will create extra capacity. It's a decent amount of capacity, considering that TIDS are usually created over vacant land, so the value is not all that high. Uh, the caution I would give you, though, is that based on the 1-1-21 values, we would have capacity. When the new values come out on August 1st for 1-1-22, considering the big buildings that are going up in Promega and Sub-Zero, and, you know, the TID nine and TID 12, uh, that capacity may not be as available. So if we're interested in creating a new TID, it would be wise to look at those before August 1st. Or after we close TIDS four, which is the next one bound to close in a couple of years.
Uh, additional questions? Seeing none, would you like to move forward?
Yes, so the next section is the, the next steps and how we move forward from here, you know, how do we create this spending plan? Wanted to start with just a simple side-by-side comparison of these two funding sources. Uh, we are planning to do one spending plan for both of the funding sources, uh, just for an efficiency purpose, but wanted to give an easy comparison. So for ARPA, we're going to get about 3.2 million, TID closure, this is a bit of a moving target, but I think we'll get about 2 million. Both of them are one-time funding. The ARPA funding, we have half available now, the other, other half will be available soon. The TID closure funding won't be available until the fall of 2022. For ARPA funding, we have specific timelines on when we have to have that money spent, or else it has to be returned. For the TID closure funding, there is no spend-down requirement, um, so it'd just be a matter of tracking it if we had something that we wanted to do longer. For ARPA, we do have reporting and compliance requirements, we kind of talked about, all those other rules that we have to follow. The TID closure, that does not apply, we have a lot of, um, opportunity to follow our normal processes there. And then on the ARPA funding, we have to limit it to those eligible uses for the funding, and on TID closure, we want to limit it to those property tax-funded projects, because that was how that money was accumulated. So the example, again, being Stormwater, if we're going to do Stormwater, we're going to do that out of ARPA, not out of TID, because it was a different funding source. So this is that slide that the mayor kind of alluded to. So through the 2022 budget discussion, uh, these items were kind of talked about as being funded through either ARPA or the TID closure. Uh, and so I think these really need to be strongly considered for the spending plan, since you haven't committed to it, but you, you kind of committed to it. So we've got the 165,000 for the McKee Farms tennis courts, 17,000 for equipment in Fact TV to facilitate hybrid meetings and events, including hopefully getting a darker bulb for that screen, because that is hard to read. Uh, 50,000, it's kind of heavy, uh, $50,000 in equipment for an additional vehicle maintenance bay, uh, body camera replacements, the South Stoner Prairie neighborhood planning, the native plantings in Pittsburgh parks, and piloting the sustainable vegetation and street maintenance. So total of about 576,000 that, from what I heard as part of the conversations, was things that you, you were interested in funding through this funding instead.
Uh, we have several questions. Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Yeah, Misty, I, uh, in regards to the South Stoner Prairie neighborhood plan, I thought only 75,000 of that was taxpayer-funded, the other 75,000 was from partners.
So that was- That was what was in the proposal originally, yes, but it is a $150,000 study, so ultimately we'd have to decide if we still want to have the partners contribute or not.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, yes, Alder Roda-Frada, you have, have a question?
Uh, it was the same that Gabriela, you know, that 150, uh, my understanding was that the city was fine, only 75,000, so that's it.
Sure, yeah.
So as, uh, Misty has mentioned, it's a, an estimated total cost of 150,000, and yes, we would look to, uh, seek private, uh, contributions for half of that, although the council may have to decide if the entities are unwilling to contribute to that, uh, neighborhood plan, if the council would like to, to, uh, proceed with the plan at full funding. So, um, that's where the $150,000 is coming from.
And then I guess I'd like to just, again, clarify that this is that 30,000-foot view, so it's not a budget necessarily. So if this is a project that you would want to do, I would encourage you to set aside the whole amount, and then reach out to the partners, and then we could modify it by the time it gets to the budget process, would be my preference of how to do that.
Mayor Richardson, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. One is that, you know, if we allocate 150,000 and we only need 75,000 or 100,000 of that, that would give the, a future council the flexibility to say, oh, we've got an extra, you know, $50,000, whatever it is, for more projects at this point in time. You know, these aren't set in stone by any means, and there is, you know, that flexibility is, because some projects come in below, and some might even be, uh, above what we're estimating. Uh, you know, Misty, one of the questions I was thinking about, you know, as we're talking about this plan as well, you know, it, it, it's possible, we could have a list of projects that are above $2 million, and we know that we probably aren't going to get to all those with this, but that could also be, you know, we know that we're going to close another TID in two years roughly, and in some ways, it could be kind of the start of the next plan for the next TID also. So I don't think we should have $10 million of projects in here, but if it's a little more than $2 million, I don't know that that's necessarily the worst thing in the world, but, I mean, you can feel free to disagree with me.
I'd say the thing I agree with the most is that whatever number we put on is going to be wrong, it's going to be either high or low, um, so having kind of round figures in it is, is very helpful at this stage. Remember, we're keeping it that 30,000-foot view, and then as we go into CIP and budget, they would get further refined.
Okay, any other questions before we move on? Go ahead, Misty.
Okay. Uh, there's some other costs that we should include, so we did spend a little bit of that ARPA money in 2021, on things like PPE and sanitizer and technology for meetings. Um, so some of that has already been spent, but a very minuscule amount compared to the amount that we received. Uh, we also have, based on the resolution you approved last night, I think that we'll get about $100,000 that might need to be spent on legal costs for that assessment claim. It'd be good to kind of set that aside as well, hopefully we don't need it, but I'd rather have it available and accessible, since that lawsuit is very important. Uh, we also have another lawsuit that we're working through with TID six, um, that we should set aside that legal cost for as well, as part of this windfall. The alternative to that would be to not close TID six, um, but I don't know that that's the, the route that we would want to take. And then here is where that de minimis administrative cost for the ARPA funding is. So we can, similar to that $10 million, just standard allowance for lost revenue, we can take a 10% standard allowance de minimis administrative cost, and just move that to the general fund to offset the single audit, my time, other people's time, as they're implementing these pro, projects and programs. This is then just a snip from the timeline to talk about what we're going to do next. So this was that kickoff. Uh, we will, after this section, we'll have just an open discussion about what your initial priorities are. Aaron is working hard on his spending plan proposal, uh, that will be released, uh, not next week, Monday, but the Monday after, the 24th. Uh, then we will have a special finance committee meeting at 6:00 PM on February 2nd. I should have sent out the appointments for all of you guys, you should have it on your calendar. We will have a public hearing at that first February council meeting, that's where the public come out, can come out and share their thoughts on what Aaron included in his spending plan. Council-proposed amendments are then due February 14th at 4:30. We then will turn them around really quickly, so they will be posted out to the website on the 17th. Uh, if I may, if you have something that, uh, requires more analysis to see whether it's eligible or not, a little bit of heads up on that would be very helpful. Uh, we also won't have staff memos included in the, the packet. Uh, we will have staff attend the meeting, so that they're available to answer questions at that point, but we don't have enough time with that quick turnaround to actually include those memos for the packet. Uh, then we will have a committee of the whole meeting to discuss those amendments in February. The second meeting in March, then, is when that council meeting will be, we will start with a public hearing for the public to weigh in on the council-proposed amendments, and then we'll go through it, just like we did with budget, so amendment by amendment. We can amend the amendment if we choose to, uh, vote each one of them, and then at the end, we would have our initial spending plan. Again, this is not final, there is still a lot of opportunity to kind of move things around as priorities shifts and projects change and costs come in, but at least would narrow the focus, and you would be directing staff to further research what needs to be done to implement those projects or programs.
Questions? Mayor Richardson, go ahead.
I guess, I just want to reiterate something Misty had said earlier, and just kind of emphasize it again, we're not going to spend the whole $5 million in a year. There, there's just no way, there's, staff does not have the capacity by any means, so I just want to make sure to reiterate that, and so people know, and the public at home knows, that this, these are projects that are going to take a number of years to do. There's certainly a number of projects that we're going to do this year, for sure, but there's no way we could spend $5 million of projects this year, so I just want to make sure that we're setting expectations a little bit, that this isn't all happening this year.
Uh, I saw some other hands. Yes, Alder Roda-Frada, you have the floor.
Uh, Misty, um, can you go back the other slide, the previous one to this? Now, uh, when you say, um, mayor proposed ARPA spending plan, so we are going to talk about ARPA funding, we are not going to talk about the, the $2 million for the TID closure in this conversation, isn't it?
Nope, we'll do both, that was, I shouldn't have ARPA in there.
Okay, okay, because it's, the language is confusing. So, the other thing, Misty, is, um, uh, how we are going to do the outreach, uh, to the, uh, to the residents? So how we are going to, because most of the people, they don't even know where ARPA is, that we got this money, so how we are going to, you know, how the city is going to do the outreach, um, uh, so, so residents, um, uh, get interest in, in, in coming to the public hearing to discuss this, you know, or to bring ideas, so they can, how they can participate.
Yep, so the schedule is adopted, I know there's been at least one article in the Pittsburgh Star. Uh, we do have a city page in the next Pittsburgh Star that we're having a little blurb about what the timelines of our, of these are. Uh, the adminis, Lisa in the administration office is helping me with news flashes, uh, for when the mayor's goes out, when, before each one of the public hearings, and then when the council amendments are ready, so those news flashes will go out to people. Um, and then this meeting, obviously, will be public and streamed on Fact TV and available for people that are interested in learning more. Um, but I think a lot of that outreach, too, falls on the elected officials, you know, making sure your constituents are represented.
Additional questions? Yes, Alder Maldonado, go ahead.
Um, Misty, just to clarify, for, for this, um, portion on feedback, are you, are you asking Alder specifically to weigh in on what their priorities are, is that what this time is intended for?
So not quite yet, that's the next part. So first, I guess it's questions, if there are for me, and then after that, I will step back and let you guys talk about what you think is important, if that's, if that's okay with the group.
Additional questions?
There you go.
Oh, all right. Julia, you do have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, so a question is, or more like a comment, is like, um, you know, I am seeing this spending plan more like a CIP plan, you know, um, maybe that we are going to use this, um, spending in the next one to three years or four years in project, um, so, and the question that I, uh, I want to know, I would like to see that this spending plan has the, the flexibility, um, that maybe we can, we can put projects in this spending plan, that then we get grants to cover some of those expenses, and that we can, you know, that, this, this is a plan that is continually, you know, we can, um, add stuff and remove stuff, you know what I mean? Like, according to the priority, or accordingly, we are getting some extra funding to cover those projects, you know? Uh, that one, it will be, I would say, I, I would, I would like to see this spending plan with that, you know, uh, with ambition, you know, um, that is, is nothing like, what we put here, we cannot touch it, we cannot remove it, you know what I mean? There is a flexibility in the plan.
If I may, 100% agree. So I think of this as actually a precursor into the CIP. So this is setting that, just the high-level priorities, if there happens to be CIP projects included in those priorities, then you will see it in the CIP that we do next, and then from there, it would go to the budget for whatever year it is. But this is very much so a plan, even more loose than what a CIP would even be.
Additional questions? Yes, Joe, go ahead.
Um, maybe this will be discussed, but, um, thinking about when it's time for amendments to be submitted, are they going to be sort of in the same type of format as, you know, CIP amendments would be? Because, you know, from, what I'm hearing is that this is a little bit more loose than a CIP, and a lot more loose than a budget. You know, so, I, I guess my question is, you know, what specifically is going to be looked for in terms of criteria and structure when, you know, council members submit amendments?
So I haven't created the form yet, uh, that will be something I need to do soon, but I do envision it very similar to the CIP, but brief, right? So you'll talk about what it is you want to do and why, uh, and then what your large allocation of funding would be in what year, uh, again, very flexible. The big thing, I think, though, that's different between this and the CIP, is because there are restrictions on how we can spend some of the money, it'd be helpful to know if it at least is loosely believed to be included as an eligible use, um, ahead of time. And then, you don't have to have the final answer, though, because once you pass the spending plan, that would be then how you direct staff to explore more of those nuances and make sure that the logistics are worked out.
Other questions? Seeing none, go ahead, Misty.
Uh, so that's all I have for me, then, so I will take a seat back and let you guys talk about what you think is the most important, uh, for our community.
Yes, Alder, um, Maldonado, you have the floor.
Sure. I'll probably say so, something a little bit later, but I think broadly, um, from reading this and from hearing your presentation, the priorities- I'll probably say something a little bit later, but I think broadly from reading this and from hearing your presentation, the priorities, for me are number one, collaboration. So I think it's important to really understand what our school districts are doing, what our county government is doing, what our state and federal government potentially is doing. And to, to the greatest extent possible, you know, do our due diligence, you know, prior to putting something forward and to see if there is potential for collaborations. So if there is some sort of, you know, let's say vaccine clinic or, you know, X expense or X, you know, initiative being put out. How can, you know, what we potentially propose be complementary to that rather than duplicative? And I think the second thing is what I've read just throughout this entire document is equity, 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 equity. Because everybody hasn't experienced this pandemic in the same type of way. And it's really important to think holistically about what, um, the effects of the pandemic have been beyond just physical health on our residents and really put people first in our, um, our proposals and what, what it is that we're going to do and think about. Who has been most heavily impacted by this, um, this pandemic? That all being said, some of the things that stood out to me in particular, and I can cite the page numbers. I noticed there were some mentions of violence prevention. I think violence has been spiked not just in, in Fitchburg, but throughout our country because of this pandemic. It's affected people's mental health. It's affected people's, um, you know, ability to live. And that has also had an impact in the increase in violence that we've seen. And I've talked to people in other communities, other municipalities, other cities who have, you know, chosen to invest ARPA funds in violence prevention. I think that should be, you know, something that we think about. The other thing that I think is really important is how our businesses have been impacted by COVID, particularly our small businesses. You know, through SIDA, we had a, a grant or a loan program. But I, I mean, I think there may be other things that we need to think about by some of our impacted business owners, particularly those who serve the community and are sort of vital to the community and think about how we can, you know, ensure that some of our closed businesses stay open and some of our really weakened businesses are sort of kept whole. And then the other thing that is really, you know, a priority for me is, um, the impact that the pandemic has had on youth. So I definitely intend to, you know, have deeper conversations with our school districts and our human services at the county level. And think about, you know, where the gaps may be and, um, you know, if the city in any type of way can, um, complement that either, you know, through, you know, some of the, the, the support for nonprofits as mentioned on page 27. Or the, you know, in, information on affordable housing, lots of instructional time, early childhood. That's mentioned sort of towards the 90s and 100s in this document. So those are just things that are in the forefront for me. And I know a, a lot of other Alders probably also have their priorities. So I'm hoping that we can collectively strike, you know, balance in what kind of things we propose.
Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I was hoping to ask Mayor Richardson if you can give us a sense of what you're thinking? What you're already planning to include? Are there things for, that we discussed in the budget that didn't pass that you're planning to include? You know, some of those things seem pretty confident, like the Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan and the police body camera, half of the police body cameras. Could you give us a sense of where you are in your thinking? I know you're not complete yet, but just so we have a sense of, I, I do have ideas that I'd love to share as well, but I, some of those things you might already be thinking. So I'd love to know if you could give us some info.
Yeah, sure. I think all that entire, you know, all those projects and that $575,000 roughly, all those I'm including. You know, we talked about those during budget process and seemed like all of them had a lot of support throughout the council. So I plan to include all those things. Obviously storm water has been a big issue in the city for a lot, for a long time. And there's a number of projects really in every district. And so I think funding a bunch of those projects is key. And part of the reason why I also like that is that we just had a huge increase in storm water fees and water fees and all those types of things. And by able, by using these funds to do future projects, we can keep those rates flat for a little while. I don't want to have another, was it like 40% or something like that increase? I don't want to, I don't want that to happen again if we can help that at least, you know, short term. And so I think that there's a lot of value in using some projects to keep those rates flat. I know that especially some businesses were impacted pretty heavily by that. And so when you talk about doing things that can help businesses, that's actually one of them because I think they get hit even worse than a homeowner does. So that'd be another one, looking for infrastructure. I think also things that can increase future flexibility is, is important as well. You know, I think there's some projects we have in the CIP right now that are super valuable. And if we can use something like ARPA funds for them, that increases our flexibility in future years to do other projects that come up. And things always come up, whatever it might be, lots of great ideas out there. And so I think, you know, as much as we can to increase our capacity for maybe borrowing, you know, that's always a little bit, you know, a tough one on how much we should borrow, shouldn't borrow. But I think there's ways to give us more flexibility there. I think that there's ways to give us more flexibility in our operating budget as well. And so as we continue to grow as a city and look to do some other projects that are in the CIP, I think those are ways that we can kind of accomplish that by having projects that provide more flexibility. Infrastructure, I think is always, you know, a tough one. Broadband is a piece to that as well. I think that we are falling behind as a city in things like road maintenance. But I also think that as a city, we're, we fall behind in, just in terms of being a 21st century organization. And I think there are some software improvements that we can do as well that not only can make things easier for our residents, but easier for our staff and provide better efficiencies for our staff as well. And hopefully reduce, reduce the need for more staff going forward, at least make the job of staff easier. So I think there's some opportunities for that as well possibly. And there's a lot of different buckets. And that's the hard thing is, there's a lot of different things we could do and a lot of great ideas. And there's way more than $5 million of ideas out there and things that would be great to do. You know, I think though that when you look at some of these projects, you know, they're going to help the environment. They're going to help people throughout the city. And I think that, you know, there's certain neighborhoods that will benefit more than others. And I think that if we can keep it as affordable as possible here in Fitchburg, I think that's key as well. You know, I think that we need to also look towards the future. And that's why things like the neighborhood plan for South Stoner Prairie is so important. Because if we don't have continual growth, then we really put huge stress on our budget and our taxpayers. And so, you know, that's another piece to it as well, is you've really got to look long-term, big picture. And, you know, I think that's how important, I don't know that, how helpful that any of this is. But there's a lot of different buckets out there. And obviously there's a number of COVID things that we can do and make sure that we're continuing to be in a place where we can provide things and safety to our customers, to our residents, I should say, and our staff. So there's a lot of different things out there. It's, it's going to be hard to narrow it down. And I, I really feel like we're going to have more than $5 million of projects. But it's just a case of we don't want it to be eight or $10 million. But just kind of knowing here, here's a lot of things that we can do. And I, I think it's because of that flexibility, there's going to be, continue to be other things that come out that we can tap into to possibly do some of these projects too. So we might say, you know, we want to do the Sunwell Glen Kettle and fix that and make it great. And then all of a sudden, in a couple of months, they come out with another great project and oh, actually we can use that funding instead. So I think there's going to continue to be other sources of funds. And that's a thing that we've talked about with staff as well, is that we need to make sure that we have that ability to get those funds in these other programs as well, because that can make the dollars that we're getting here go even further.
Julia, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, so it's more like a question, a general, um, comment to, um, I would like to see that, you know, when we decided how to invest this, you know, uh, pocket of money, we should have a fair allocation of the funds. What does it mean that, it means that, uh, yes, we have a lot of issue with the storm water. We have, um, uh, you know, the mayor mentioned road maintenance, you know? But I think we need to, we need to, we need to work and decide that which percentage we are going to use for, you know, each category, you know, we're going to put everything in storm water. I, I am not going to be happy with that because I would like to have a fair percentage of the allocation for different project. So, uh, and I would like to see that diversity of project, you know, represented in how we use these funds. So that one for me is going to be key. Uh, and also for me is going to be key to invest in the area of the city where, where they are qualified census tract, where we have a lot of need. And need from everything, from park infrastructure to, to connectivity, to bike trails, to transportation, you name it. So we need to determine what are really the needs, but, um, but I think that I would like to see, I would like to do this exercise with this in mind, you know, to have a fair allocation of funds and invest in the area that really, really need that.
Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Richardson, I just want to say that was very helpful. So I appreciate your, your thoughts. I did have one other question. Do you anticipate that your spending plan will allocate all 5.2 million? Or do you anticipate that it'll leave some room for some additional ideas from the Alders to come out through the amendment process?
Well, like we talked about it, we don't have a specific dollar amount that we have to hit during this process. So it's not like, you know, I, I think there's going to be more than $5 million of projects actually to start with. And we can add more to it. It's not like, you know, you have to take out a $100,000, put $100,000 in. We don't have that constraint that we do on something like the budget. So I think that there's going to be room for additional projects to be added without, I think, just based on some of the stuff we already have, there's probably going to be more than $5 million on there. Things can be removed. I, I, there might be things that I think are important that other people don't think are important. I think that there's things that are going to be specifically on the TID project too, that we're not going to get to in the next couple of years. And so really, the, when the next TID closes, it's probably going to be maybe in that bucket that it happens. Because it is a plain document. It is similar to a CIP in some respects. And I think that it's important to look long-term and all those things that are out there. I believe that there's some pipes in the Tower Hill neighborhood that are lead maybe, you know, something like that, I think is a key piece. I think that's the only area. I don't know, maybe there's more or not lead.
Actually, uh, engineering has verified that we do not have any remaining lead service lines.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, good. All right. That's good information. I hadn't gotten updated on. So that was one that I was looking at because, you know, we've seen that in other communities as well. That's an important thing to, to do. So, uh, again, I don't know how helpful that is, but.
Could I, could I keep going, Alder Udall?
Sure, go ahead, Alder Gerhart.
If someone else has something first, that's.
No, no, no. Your, your, your hand is raised? Nope, no one else is raised. Go ahead.
No, that, that really is helpful, Aaron, because I, 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 I think that this is a cool opportunity to bring forward ideas and let the staff explore them. And I, I appreciate the fact that we might not have to put in amendments to remove funding to add things. I, I just think that that's like a healthier way to have a debate. So there's less, less contentiousness, right? Because it's really about kind of dreaming about the future and thinking about it. Um, I'm, I'm interested, do you want to hear specific ideas tonight or is that something that we should communicate with you separately?
Either way, the sooner the better because, you know, I've, I've done a little bit of work and I don't have about a week to get this done. So the sooner the better. The more, if you have them tonight, that's great. Otherwise, you know, the next couple of days would be great.
Yeah, did you, thank you. Alder Roda Frada, go ahead. I, I'm hoping that that was the, your question was answered, Alder Gerhart.
100% was, and I'll let other people go, but I might.
All right. Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, the other thing, uh, this is for Aaron, if, when you're putting your list to, um, in SIDA, we have discussed several times about how, where to grow as a city. And then, you know, that we are going to allocate funds for the, um, for the, the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan. I would like also to see if you can put funding for the, um, the, um, the greenfield neighborhood plan. If we can start working on that too, because this is another area there, where the city is going to grow in the future. But it would be great if we are proactive and we are ready to start working on the plan. So, um, so we, we establish the foundation for the next five to 10 year of, and, you know, on the area where we want to, uh, to have residential growing. So I was thinking that include, um, you know, um, allocate some funding for the greenfield neighborhood plan too. So that one is, um, and also I have a couple of projects, they are related to parks. Infrastructure too, um, that, you know, we have the hub. How we can allocate some funding to, to the half phase one is, uh, um, you know, even though it's not in the qualified census tract, but it's going to provide services. And the people that are going to use of that park, that area of the park or coming to that park are going to be from area from the qualified census tract. So, um, also, um, I was talking, I was thinking about, uh, how to improve or add some amenity in some parks that we don't have, like, you know? How we can, um, if we can allocate more funding for 22, 23 and 24, a little bit more money in the healthy neighborhood in from a grant program, maybe to add the $50,000 additional dollars in each year for the next three year or the next four year, you know? Because we are working with this not-for-profit in the, in the healthy neighborhood area and they are providing services. So we, we discussed at SIDA also, um, the idea in the future to how to create or develop a co, co-working space, look like a business incubator and, and working with, um, you know, so that one is another, uh, you know, idea about economic development and working with entrepreneurship, um, a small business owner. So how we can, if we can, with the buy, um, we had a presentation the other day at SIDA about the buys, the, what is buy cycles? B-cycle?
Bicycle.
Bicycle, um, how we can fund this project in the entire city instead of doing it in phases, doing it in the whole city. You know, um, if we can consider adding EV, a station or how we can also, how we can use solar, um, in, in, you know, you know, uh, you know, so I have a, I have a couple of lists. With a lot of, um, projects, uh, but, um, but in general is like, you know, um, I, my, my, my biggest, my biggest, what I, I expect about this plan is that we use, uh, we allocate the funding in a fair way. That we don't, we don't, that, you know, we don't put all the fun in a stormwater project, you know what I mean? Or in row or, you know, so we do a little bit of. in a stormwater project, you know what I mean? Or enroll or, you know, so we do a little bit of efficacy.
Yeah, just lots of great ideas. Uh, I agree a hundred percent on the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan. That's actually already in the broad budget because I agree. I already have that in there as one of the options.
Other comments? Alder Gerhart.
Thank you. I'm gonna throw out a couple of specific ideas, um, for you, Mayor Richardson. So I, you've already heard my ideas from the budget process and I'm, I'm glad that you're considering those. Um, in particular, the tree plantings and the sustainable vegetation and street medians. Um, I, I know we did pass a sustainability plan for 25,000. I would ask that you consider some additional funding for that sustainability plan as part of the initial proposal. Uh, specifically because our sustainability specialist is working on a proposal for an RFP. And I think if we can put an RFP out for more than that, it will allow us to kind of develop a more robust plan uh, from the outset. And I, I think even a small increase in funds could potentially have a big impact. So um, I, I know Phil Gribby has been thinking about what that level of additional funding could be. Um, and I can, I'm happy to get you that information from him, um, in the next few days even, if that's possible. Um, and then a couple other, you know, so the other thing I would ask is consider to put um, some additional funds into the hybrid electric vehicle fund. Um, you know, right now it's funded through gasoline savings, which I think long-term is a good funding mechanism. But it only really works if we've started to transition our fleet over to hybrid electric where we're yielding lots of gas savings. I think it, um, right now, because we only have one hybrid vehicle on the way, um, it really limits us in, in order to really be able to transition the fleet. So if you are open to adding some additional funds to the hybrid electric vehicle fund, I think that would go a long way toward setting us up for the future. And then a couple of additional, um, I, I guess one additional idea I'll throw out there right now is, um, maybe considering purchasing some additional loading machines to set us up for new polling places. I know that, you know, in particular, the Town of Madison acquisition, we might have to have an additional polling place out in that part of town. And then also, I, I still think District One is an issue where there's, there's, you know, both sides of a road can create challenge. So having two polling places in that district seems like potentially a good idea. And I know the big barrier is the infrastructure. Um, and so I think that could set us up for the future, even the near future. So those are some initial, um, ideas that I would like you to consider for your initial proposal if possible.
Yeah, great ideas. Uh, number of money, most of those already in the plan.
Yes, Alder Maldonado, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is more of a process-related question. Um, and I don't know if, I don't think Valerie's here. Is she still on vacation or? Um, but I, I have been reaching out to some staff members that staff the committees that I, um, sit on. Um, but I was also considering, just because of the infrequency of some of the meetings, um, asking committee members. And I'm wondering, I, I mean, I, I, I think I'm doing this the right way. I just wanna make sure I'm not breaking walking quorum. But, um, I, I would like to maybe send a email to committee members to ask for their feedback and just ask that they submitted directly to me and not necessarily, you know, email all of each other back. Um, is that kosher? I just wanna make sure I'm doing that right before I take that step.
So you're right, Valerie's not here, um, but I would be very cautious about doing that. I think that does present at least an appearance of a walking quorum. Um, so I'd be careful. I know at the scheduled meeting, Gabriella had suggested that we refer out the mayor's spending plan to all of the committees that meet in between those times. Um, so I do have that on my list. So in theory, that could show up as an agenda item for all of the meetings that do occur during that time. Then it would be publicly noticed and accessible as required under open meetings law.
Yeah, the challenge is a few of mine don't happen until after the plan's over. Um, so I, I'll say this, you know, since you are asking for specific things, um, I, I'm gonna kind of, I need to clean up some of my thoughts and I will be um, getting in contact with you, uh, Mayor, you know, within the next couple of days with some of my ideas.
Sounds good. And another way, potential way around that is talk to your staff contact, have them send out an email to all the committee members and have the committee members reply to the staff member. And, you know, then they can share some of the ideas or consensus that way. But have the staff send that out instead of yourself, and that's one way to get around that.
Thank you.
If anyone elects to go that route, if you could at least include me as a copy in that request to staff, I would, I would appreciate it.
Alder Aratafroda, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, I forgot to mention, um, a couple of other parks-related item, Aaron. I don't know, maybe you have heard about that from the parks. Is, um, you know, Tower Hill, uh, the park shelter had been in the CIP for many, many years. Um, maybe it could be a good project. Um, also, we had a Maquis, uh, kid crossing replacement. It was in the CIP. I don't know if we can allocate some funding, you know, um. Uh, this is another crazy idea that, not crazy, but I, you know, you remember that we have people from the senior center that came and asked for a bus for the next bu- uh, budget. So maybe we can allocate, you know, a percentage of money for the, to fund the bus for the senior center, and then we can ask them to to match the rest of the funding, doing like a fundraising, you know? Um, but this, uh, at least we are, we can provide it with some funding, you know, um. Um, what else? Um, oh, what else? Let me see. Um, I don't know, one of the, the Cheryl Drive Stormwater Project, I don't know, it's gonna, would be fun with the, with ARPA. Um, also another, another idea, you know, it's a good idea is to build an skateboard park in the Jim Hewell Park. Um, another idea could be forgive, uh, you know, the, the, the loans that we did with Sida, maybe we can forgive those loan to the small owner. Um, and this is another way to help them. Um, so, so this is part of the list.
I think, uh, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, earlier, Alder Maldonado had mentioned collaboration, and I think that's, that is a key word here. And I, early on, Mr. You had mentioned, uh, funding going from, going to county as well. And if there is a way to, to find out where they're allocating their money, um, instead of duplicating uh, efforts here in the city of Pittsburgh, or if we could piggyback on a particular project that might benefit the city as a whole, I think that'd be ideal. I don't know how easy that would. I'm not quite sure what kind of challenge that, that would be for you, but, uh, if there was a way to, to to find out that information, I think that would be great.
I will see what I can find out.
Okay, very good. And then, uh, just to underscore, uh, what Mayor Richardson had men- mentioned, uh, the Stoner Prairie Neighborhood is something, uh, that's near and dear to District Four. And, uh, not really to just District Four, but the city as a whole, uh, the mayor had mentioned continued growth. I think that's vital for the city. Uh, I'd like to see that project move forward. And then there was a lot of debate last fall with the budget amendments regarding the water projects, the water, stormwater projects. And they were on, they were off, they were on. And um, I think there was a, a general understanding that some of these projects would come from the ARPA money, and I'd like to see some of these projects move forward. Uh, I think it's vital that, uh, as the mayor mentioned, that, that, that stormwater utility uh, dollars stay flat. We encountered that la- encountered it last year, and it was raised, if I remember correctly, 38%, 40%, which was a incredible dollar amount or percentage added to those bills. And I'd like to see, I hope we don't have a repeat of it. Uh, stormwater projects are important, but we need to find a way to manage that, those projects without putting such a heavy burden on our residents. Those are my comments. Yes, Alder, um, Maldonado, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess now that, now that you've, uh, mentioned the collaboration piece, I will, um, sort of more explicitly state, uh, something that I'm, I'm thinking of, but again, I'm gonna send a little bit more detail, um, once I'm able to gather some, um, better information. But, um, one of the things that, um, the city of Milwaukee did with, um, some of their ARPA funding is to, um, increase the capacity of the Office of Violence Prevention. Um, this was an office established through their health department in 2015, um, that actually created a, an entire blueprint for violence prevention uh, for the city. And over the course of about four years, um, reduced the murder rate in Milwaukee by about 33%. And, um, those numbers unfortunately spiked back up during the pandemic. Um, Dane County released their own violence prevention plan, and a lot of that plan focuses on collecting really good data, but also on, um, thinking about ways to, you know, again, prevent violence and, uh, preventing violence is, you know, it's a holistic thing. There's not one sort of set solution to it. But one, um, thing in particular that has worked, uh, in communities throughout the country is, um, um, you know, essentially violence interrupters. Um, and, you know, we do have violence interrupters, you know, here in Dane County, um, through the Focus Interruption Coalition. Um, the city of Madison, uh, increased their, uh, number of violence interrupters from two to four. And, you know, these are folks that essentially, when something happens in the community, um, they have the relationships, they have the, um, the knowledge and the connections in the community, and they have the lived experience to be able to either stop things from happening or, um, you know, stop things from escalating after they have happened. Um, I have been approached in the past by, you know, um, you know, folks in Madison, folks at Dane County about, you know, if this is a possibility in Pittsburgh. And I seriously, um, would like you to consider, uh, investing in a violence interrupter uh, for the city of Pittsburgh. And if we can collaborate in some sort of way with, uh, Madison Dane County Public Health, um, to do that, to secure some matching funds, um, I think that would be critical. Uh, I think oftentimes we put a lot on our, um, law enforcement. And, uh, from my experience, just in, you know, dealing with some of the incidents that have happened last year and this year, or in 2020, 2021, uh, in my own neighborhood. Um, you know, police often respond to the calls. But, um, you know, you, you need somebody there that knows the neighborhood as things are happening in real time, because oftentimes, you know, somebody can stop something and nobody will even know about it, because, you know, that's the, you know, that's really the effect of, of the job. So I, I can give you more information, more data on this. Um, you know, it's proven, it's evidence-based. Um, but I seriously think that's something that we should consider because violence has been, uh, it's been an effect of the pandemic. It's been something that's heightened during the pandemic, and it's something we should, violence prevention is something we should really consider investing in in the city.
I guess I'll just say it, it sounds like a really interesting idea. It doesn't sound like it's a one-time cost, so that'd be, it seems like that'd be something more for the operating budget, I would think. Because it's not like you do it for a year or two and all the violence is gone, you don't have to keep doing it. So it, I think it's a really interesting idea. I think just from the little bit of description you gave, it sounds like it's more of an operating budget piece probably than these, which are one-time funds.
Additional questions, comments? Alder Gerhart.
All right, so I have, I said, hi, thank you. I have two more ideas, and I don't know that, um, Mayor Richardson, if you're gonna want to include this in your initial proposal or not, but I probably will bring them forward as amendments if, um, if they can be. And I'm happy to provide you more information if you want, just let me know. Um, but one idea that I've been playing around with for a little while is actually creating a Pittsburgh tree nursery here. You know, we actually have quite a lot of space in the city, unlike other cities, and trees are incredibly expensive. One of, one of the reasons which is that a lot of nurseries failed in 2008 during the recession and they never recovered. And so the trees are limited, so therefore they're more expensive. And because we have, we have land available, there, there is potential for us to have our own Pittsburgh tree nursery where we could grow our own trees, reduce, completely eliminate, um, the cost of having to buy trees elsewhere, and also potentially use it as a revenue generating to sell trees to other municipalities. And also, I think you could, you could piggyback on it and make it a beautiful park space and a place that people might want to visit and learn about trees. Um, so that's an idea I've been playing around with, and I, I, I mentioned it to Anna Healy, our forester, and she said, she thought it was an interesting idea. Um, so anyway, that's, I'm probably gonna bring that up again. I just wanted to give you guys a preview of that. Um, and then the other thing is that, you know, as we talk about these expansions into the city, I think we should, uh, expansions of the city with these neighborhood plans, I do think we need to think about how we can expand public transit um, to accommodate that additional influx of people and houses. And one of the things I think could work really well for our city, even in the short term, is park and ride spaces, you know, actually just parking lot areas where people can park and hop right on a bus that goes straight downtown. Um, and I, I think Fish Hatchery Road would be a good candidate for that. Um, and if it went up past um, the City Hall campus, further down Fish Hatchery Road, potentially that could extend the bus line so that uh, City Hall campus is connected to the rest of those bus lines. Um, so land acquisition or creating a park and ride in the short term, or, or even just acquiring land so that we could put a park ride in, um, in the future, I think potentially has some long-term, uh, benefits. Uh, Fish Hatchery Road is one area. I don't think that that's by any means the only area that we could put one. Um, but anyway, those are two more ideas that I'll probably be talking more about. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? See, none. Uh, we should probably move on.
I have an idea. Randy.
Alder Aratafroda, go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking about, uh, I was thinking how, um, how we can involve the community to participate in this process. And maybe we can have a link in the website where people can put like a suggestion on how to use these funds, you know, send like a, you know, um, they can, they can open the link and say, you know, if they have ideas, I don't know, to, to have a sense of how we can involve more people, the community to participate and.
Couldn't they just email, I'm sorry, did it wrong. Couldn't they just email the Alder? Would, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, but the idea is was more like, uh, if I am, I, I want to send, you know, go to the website and there is a link and I can like, uh, it would be like a mailbox there, and then all the ideas go there, and then, I don't know, maybe we can receive some ideas that we are not even considered, and that could be good ideas. I don't know. Um, yeah, it could be that they can send, you have a list of your, you know, you know, you can contact your, uh, your, your members, you know, your, your resident constituents, you know, they can email you, but I was thinking more in general, you know, how to make this more like, um, I don't know, uh, an initiative that people can be more involved. I don't know. It's a crazy idea. I am thinking aloud, so.
Very good. Yes, Joe, is that a hand raised?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking aloud too, but, um, you know, potentially, you know, some sort of forum. I think, I think we need to flesh out how, but like something maybe through Fact TV. Um, you know, where, where, you know, there's some sort of interactive way to be able to participate and submit those ideas. Um, I'll, I'll give it some more thought, Julia, and I'll, I'll think about how we can maybe try to collaborate on something.
Very good. Um, I don't see any hands raised. We are nearing the hour. Uh, I think if you have additional suggestions, uh, email Mayor Richardson, City Administrator Chad Reckland, or Director of Finance, Misty Dodge. Um, otherwise, if there's no other comments, I'll, I'll move on. And, uh, our under announcements, the next committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for January 26, 2022. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion made by Alder Wheeler.
Second.
Second made by Alder Wheeler. Second made by Alder Herbst. Uh, place the motion before us. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the ayes have it. We are adjourned at 8:51 PM. Thank you.